There was a film a number of years ago that I never saw and have no desire to see, called The Accidental Tourist. And Paul was not an accidental tourist here. He was in Athens, and rather than be taken up with the sights of this great city, one of the greatest of the classical world. It's true, it was a bit, at this point in time, shall we say, past its prime. Its golden age was kind of 400 years in the rearview mirror by the time Paul got there. But it was still considered a really great place of culture and learning and thinking. And so it's interesting, as we see Paul going there, and being burdened about reaching the people of the gospel, he's gonna do it differently than he did in the Jewish communities. And as we noted before, in the Jewish communities, the apostles are able to go right to the Bible. There's that shared heritage. But when we talk about the people in Athens, he has to start more broadly, just as he had to those in Lystra, and speak to them about the God of creation and the God of providence, and use that as his jumping off point to get to Christ. Of course, we always need to bring in the scriptures, but how do you get the conversation started, and how do you get the ideas across? Now, we don't have time to really treat this in the detail it deserves, and I want to dip into chapters 18 and 19 in this session as well, because in this part of Acts, we're not dealing with Judaism, with the typical biblical errors and works righteousness trying to be added to the gospel. We're dealing with more pagan philosophy, and with spiritism being a big problem as well. It's true, in Corinth, they're still reaching out to the Jews, but here in Athens, and then in Ephesus in Acts 19, it's gonna be more paganism and the occult that are the enemies. And these are certainly things that are ubiquitous in our society. They're everywhere you go. I used to work for a car rental company, and I was talking about Schillington, Pennsylvania last night, which is a section of Reading, it's kind of a suburb almost, and right next to us, there was a tarot card reader. So, you know, people would be in and out of that place all day long. And everywhere you go, you find these, right at the corner, when you turn off the main highway to go back a couple of backstreets to where our chapel meets, there's a store in there, and they're always advertising Reiki, and astral projection, and channeling, and all these kind of weird, what the Bible would call doctrines of demons, you know, where they're trafficking in spirits. So these things are very much with us today. And even in Acts 17, we find a lot of the modern thinking of people that suppose themselves to be scientific or intellectual. So Paul begins to talk to people in the synagogue with the Jews, verse 17 says, "and with the Gentile worshippers," the god-fears that we've noticed. But he also is in the marketplace daily with those who happen to be there. Verse 18, "Then certain Epicurean and Stoic philosophers encountered him, and some said, 'What does this Babbler want to say?'" Now, "Babbler" was kind of a pejorative term, it's sort of a put-down. The term is a seed picker, and the images of a bird that picks up a little bit here and a little bit there, and you know how birds are when they're building a nest, they can pick up a bit of glitter, you know, a little bit of tinsel, a little bit of tin foil, a little bit of grass, whatever, and they kind of put together something that to a bird looks like a really fly pad, if you'll forgive the double entendre there. But anyway, they come along here and think that he's just somebody who's cobbled together a new philosophy that really doesn't hold water. And Athens was big on this. They spent their time, as we're gonna learn about Areopagus, Mars Hill, this had been the supreme court in Athens at one time. Now, now, of course, they were under Roman jurisdiction, but the Romans, just like they gave the Jewish Sanhedrin a lot of leeway with their own people, they gave Mars Hill, apparently, a lot of leeway with the pagans at Athens. They didn't get involved unless there was a big law and order issue that they had to deal with. So, in any case, Paul runs into these two groups of philosophers, which were diametrically opposed to each other. I mean, they would, you know, say, "We don't agree with them." And it's kind of interesting, you see that in the Gospels as well, that you get the Pharisees and the Sadducees, you get people that are religious right and religious left, and they wouldn't agree on much, but they both agree they don't like the Lord Jesus Christ, they don't agree with his gospel. Isn't it interesting how opposition to the Lord makes strange bedfellows? And here, it's the same thing. These philosophers start discussing with Paul, and they really aren't happy about the things he's saying, they don't think this is a real legitimate philosophy. Others said, he seems to be, it says there in verse 18, "Others said, 'He seems to be a proclaimer of foreign gods, because he preached to them Jesus and the resurrection.'" Now, this shows us what it's like to go to a society that is not Christian, that doesn't have those cultural roots and those historical roots of knowing the Bible. There was a time, even up to modern American history, I'd say prior to the 1960s, when everybody, whether they were a believer or not, whether they were religious or not, they had some basic acquaintance with the stories of the Bible, or some of them. And you can pick this up pretty readily, because you can't read Shakespeare, you can't read Dickens, you can't read any of the great works of 19th, 18th, 16th century literature without finding all kinds of biblical allusions. And if you didn't know a little bit about the Bible, you know, you'd have no idea what these were talking about. And you think of how many expressions come into the language, into the English language from the Bible. I can't think of one right off the top of my head, but if we got into it, a lot of the common things that people say are things that come from the Bible. So there was a time when people would commonly talk about their three score and ten, you know, and that's Psalm 90, isn't it? They might not be able to tell you it's in Psalms, or it's the 90th Psalm, but they'd use that expression to talk about lifespan, or other things that people would say. So there was this kind of shared cultural knowledge of the Bible. But starting in the 1960s, of course, there was an attack not only on the Bible, but on any kind of authority source. And people began saying, "Question authority." And so among the authorities that got thrown out was the Bible. And now, we're a couple generations beyond that, so we're really in an environment that some sociologists describe as post-Christian. In other words, that people don't even know the Christian roots of much of what went on before them. I'm not saying that this was ever a Christian nation in the sense that it was governed directly by the Bible, or directly a theocracy, or that everybody in the country, or that even the majority, were believers. You read church history, and there were a lot of unbelievers in colonial America. That's why we needed Jonathan Edwards, and George Whitfield, and the Tennant Brothers, and others, to go through the country and preach the gospel, and the Lord saved many people. But there certainly was a greater knowledge of Christian principles, and even some knowledge of the Word of God. That, in most places, is now going by the wayside, if not totally gone. You can still find places in the Bible Belt, places in the Midwest, where there's knowledge of God and knowledge of the Word. And of course, there are plenty of Bible-believing churches throughout the country. But you can go to New England, you can go to the Pacific Northwest, and you're glad to find a Christian's dog, because there aren't very many believers, you know, just statistically, there aren't many churches of any sort that even preach the gospel. So we're really facing days that are increasingly like Athens in Acts 17. Now, these Epicureans and Stoics, as I said, they were opposed in what they believed. I won't get too deeply into what they believed. Epicureans trace their founding to a philosopher called Epicurus, and he believed that the best thing in life, the highest principle, was living the life of pleasure. And you shouldn't mistake that for living a life of hedonism. He's not talking about dissipated pleasure, because he knows if you drink too much, you're hungover, and you know, you might get into a fight, you might get arrested, and that's a bad consequence. Really, what they were saying is, you wanna kind of pull back from the rough and tumble of life. And they believed that the world came about randomly, that there was basically these atoms falling through infinite space. They did believe in gods, but they believed that the gods didn't have anything to do with us, really, because the gods themselves were good Epicureans. They didn't want to get involved, you know, they wanted to pull back and not have problems. So they don't worry too much about people. You had these atoms falling through space, and suddenly, there was a swerve, and these atoms came together in these collections that formed the universe as we know it. Now, oftentimes, when we hear the theory of evolution promoted, people promote it like it is cutting-edge, like it's this new idea. People were benighted before 1859, when Darwin published The Origin of Species, and nobody knew about the theory of evolution. Now, listen, Darwin's grandfather, Erasmus Darwin, it's on record, he had his own evolutionary ideas, not as developed as Charles later developed. And you can even go back to Thales of Miletus, about, I think it was about five centuries, maybe six, before the time of Christ, he had a version of evolution. And so did the ancient Babylonians, and so did a lot of the cultures when you look at their cosmologies. And in fact, when you look at the ancient cultures of all the countries around the Levant, the so-called Fertile Crescent, they all have these ideas that the world came about through materialism, through the gods using the material stuff of the world to make the world. So when we come to the Bible, and we read in Hebrews 11, "By faith we understand that the worlds were made of things that do not appear." That's revolutionary. You know, it would be centuries and millennia till atomic theory came. Now, the Greeks had an atomic theory, but it was very, very basic. The advanced, modern atomic theory of the Rutherford-Boram atom, and so forth, and all the things that we've learned since then about quarks, and neutrinos, and Higgs bosons, and electrons, neutrons, protons, et cetera, all of that has been more of modern understanding. And if you look at that, people say, you know, everything that we see around us is made of things we can't see, and even those things are made of smaller bits, and all of that is tied together, and what determines what it is, there's an interlocking information, underlying creation. Especially when we think in biological terms of human life, how we are, what we look like, how tall or short we are, how prone we are to be heavy or thin, or somewhere in between, our color of hair and eyes, the timber of our voice, the size of our nose, and innumerable other personal features are determined by our DNA, right? And what is DNA but information? So the Bible was saying, "The world and everything around is made of things you cannot see." And what does the Bible say, "Made all things"? Well, "In the beginning was the Word," says John, chapter 1. And John Lennox makes a point of this, that he would even present this idea to Nobel Prize-winning scientists and other famous scientists, and he would say to them, "Look, the Bible had this concept, that there's an information underlying everything." Of course, that information emanates from a person. The Word is a person who created things. He's in the earth. And how did God create? He created by his Word. He spoke, and it came into being. He said, "Let there be light," and there was light. And so, the underlying information that holds the universe together, that in fact is holding the universe right now, Hebrews 1 says, "He upholds all things by the Word of his power." So here's the Lord upholding the universe by his Word, and that same word, 2 Peter 3 reminds us, is gonna bring this world as it currently is to a close, and replace it with something better. "The new heavens and new earth wherein dwells righteousness." So when they come at you with a evolution, and we don't discount, by the way, micro-evolution, we acknowledge that the breadth of God's creation is that, under certain conditions and certain phenomenon, animals and people even can adapt to their situation, and there can be changes. But that is at such a small level that it doesn't create anything. It merely brings out the potential of what God's already wrought in that being that he's created. It's macro-evolution that we're normally hearing about, and what we take exception to. The idea that everything in the world came about by blind, unthinking material coupled with chance, and you multiply that by billions of years, and somehow it makes sense. Of course, it's rubbish. It doesn't make sense. And mathematically, it's untenable, geologically, it's untenable, astronomically, it's untenable, and on and on and on. The fossil record doesn't support it, there are no transitionary fossils of humans, the ones they said that were have been disproven, but that's another sermon. Anyway, the Epicureans thought, "Well, we're all just here kind of randomly, and just as randomly, one day, the universe is gonna collapse on itself and burn up." Now, that sounds a lot like modern cosmologists. You know, someday, the planet will just be destroyed. It might be by global warming, it might be because we couldn't control our hairspray, or something like that, you know? And as I said the other day, the Bible acknowledges there are deep-seated problems in the world. The creation is groaning. But the origin of that is not some sort of small lifestyle change we can make, it's sin. That's the problem. And that's gotta be, the Savior has to be the one who leads the creation into the glorious liberty of the children of God. When man is liberated from sin by the redemption of the body, so will creation be liberated from sin. As man goes, so goes the creation over which he was put, and we get that as far back as the first three chapters of Genesis. Now, in contrast, and by the way, the Epicureans, when they thought everything would be destroyed, or when we die, our atoms just come apart, and we go to nothingness. And there was actually a Roman poet called Lucretius, who said, "This is the greatest doctrine ever, because this means there's no hell, there's no judgment. We can live without fear of judgment, and that is so liberating." And he wrote an epic poem in multiple books to celebrate that doctrine. It's called "De Rerum Natura" in Latin. But anyway, when we come to the Stoics, these people were very different. They thought that we were all here, again, sort of by fate, that there was this world soul, and we were just kind of here, and our destiny was pretty much predetermined, and we couldn't alter it. So what we had to do was, we had to just manfully bear it. And you know, you can't alter things, really, you've just gotta kind of take what comes and try to live a noble and courageous life. And again, they had no concept that there was any future that would be any better. And everything was predetermined. And you even get certain scientists today saying, you know, "Because of DNA, everything is preordained. We don't really have a free will, it's illusory, everything's predetermined by our genes, we're just dancing to our DNA," as one scientist put it. "And this world as it's going, well, it's just kind of all going in the course it is, there's no overarching reason or purpose, and there's no better way that it's going." So such were the Stoics. Now, we hear alterations on those ideas all the time. When they heard Paul speak, they obviously didn't understand him, not that they didn't understand the words, but in verse 18, he said, "He seems to be a proclaimer of foreign gods, because he preached to them Jesus and the resurrection." The Anastasis, or Anastasia, that's where I get Anastasia, my oldest daughter's name. It means to stand up again. It's one of the Bible words for resurrection. And when they heard him talking about Jesus and the resurrection, they thought Jesus was one God, and Anastasis was the other God, resurrection was the other God. And so they were totally mistaking what he said. So you shouldn't feel badly if you start explaining to the gospel to somebody, and they say, "Oh, oh, I get it," and they tell you back what they think you're saying, and it's totally off. I mean, that even happened to Paul. So don't feel bad, brothers, keep going. But what they did was, they took him and brought him, verse 19 says, "to the Areopagus," or Mars Hill. Ares is the name of Mars in Greek, Mars is the Latin name of that God, the famous God of war. If you know Holst's Planets, he talks about Mars, the bringer of war, in classical music. "May we know that what this new doctrine is of what you speak, for you're bringing some strange things to our ears; therefore we want to know what these things mean." Now, at this point, the Holy Spirit comments on the situation. Verse 21, "For all the Athenians and the foreigners who were there spent their time in nothing else but either to tell or hear some new thing." Well, we are living in those days, aren't we? I mean, this is as Oprah Winfrey written all over it, or Phil Donahue before her, you know, or whomever. I mean, what's the latest? What's the new thing? And everybody wants to hear what's going on, and the new thing. And so, we're looking at Twitter, and we're looking at the web, and we're watching the talking heads on TV, and trying to find out what's going on. The problem is, we're gonna find out that these people discuss, and discuss, and discuss, but they never arrive in any conclusion. They're like the people described in 2 Timothy 3, who are ever learning, but never coming to a knowledge of the truth. So the problem is, you can be so open-minded that you never stand for anything, that you allow any kind of error in. If you have a computer, it may have a firewall that is securing it, but if you open up to whatever is going to send forth the messages and receive anything that comes down the bike, guess what? A computer virus is in your future. So you wanna maintain that firewall, and only give invitation of access to the safe signal that's being sent to it. Is that okay? Okay, good. I have been a careful study to Robby Yoda Youssef, who has taught me this concept of IT and tech security. But it holds true in spiritual things as well. Now, Paul says, as he stands in the midst of the Areopagus, verse 22, "Ye men of Athens, I perceive that in all things you are very religious." That's the New King James rendering. The King James says, "very superstitious." And that word could be translated either way, depending on the context. And maybe Paul's intentionally leaving it a little bit nebulous, like you don't know, is he just commenting on the fact that they like to worship many gods? Or is he also saying, you know, "This is a superstition, this is a spiritual belief that's not really rooted in the truth? It's just something that plays upon your fears or your instincts." In any case, he goes on, he says, "For as I was passing through and considering the objects of your worship, I even found an altar with this inscription, 'To the unknown God.'" Now, again, here, Paul is using a bridge to preach the gospel to them, because he looks around, and he says, "Well, you people are very spiritual people," you know? We hear that a lot today. "I'm spiritual, but I'm not religious." And that frees people up to have the cafeteria kind of approach. You go to the cafeteria, here comes the hamburger, "Oh, thank you very much, I'll take that." Here come the french fries, "Oh, thank you very much, I'll take that." Here come the platanos, "Oh, I'll take that, thank you very much." Here come the lima beans, "No way, Jose, get that out of here, no thanks." You know, here comes the salad, "Oh, no, thank you." Bunny food, waste of stomach space. So you take what you want, I guess I'm putting my cards on the table, aren't I? But anyway, you take what you want, and you leave what you don't want. And that's what a lot of people want with spiritual truth. They wanna kind of customize a personal view of what is true about the universe, and even what is true about God. And this, of course, is the very oldest lie in the book. You go back to Genesis 3, and the first assault is on the Word of God, and the second is a lie, that you may be as gods. So people making themselves their own God, their own arbiter of truth, and whatever little gods they want to create to worship, we've already spoken about the evils and the falsehood of idolatry. But he refers to this altar to the unknown God. Now, in extra-biblical history, we know that they had these altars in Athens. There are other references to them having altars to an unknown God. But this particular one seems to be connected to a story from hundreds of years in the past. The story goes that there was a plague that hit Athens, and they offered sacrifices to Athena, who was the patron saint of Athens, the goddess of wisdom. They offered sacrifices to other gods, and whomever they sacrificed to, it didn't work. The plague kept going, people kept dying. So they started to panic, and finally, some wise men said, "Some wise man said, 'Obviously, you know, this is a God that we don't know.'" So what we need to do is offer a sacrifice, a sacrifice to the unknown God. And so the story goes, they allowed an animal, I think it was a goat, may have been a sheep, I'm not sure, but they let this animal go out on the hillside, and where that animal stopped, they said, "Okay, we'll put the altar there." They went and killed the animal, built the altar, sacrificed it to the unknown God, and so the story goes, the plague stopped. Now, just as Paul had used, as people had been confused, rather, in chapter 14, by a story about the gods in their past, and Paul has to overcome that, here he takes a story from their past, and he builds on that to explain the gospel to them. And he says, "You know that unknown God? That's the one I'm gonna declare to you." He says, "Therefore, the one whom you worship without knowing, him I proclaim to you." Verse 24, "God who made the world and everything in it." So he goes straight for personal creation. He is the Lord of heaven and earth. He's not an impersonal God, he's not a remote God. This isn't deism, that says, "Well, yes, there's a God, but he doesn't have much to do with us." It isn't Epicureanism, saying God's Epicurean, he wouldn't get involved with us, because we're trouble, and he doesn't want to be troubled. No, God is Lord of heaven and earth. He has sovereignty over it. He cares about what happens in it, and ultimately, he's taking it to his desired end. But look at the next statement, "He does not dwell in temples made with hands." Now, that's the same point that Stephen made back in Acts chapter 7. Stephen had to make that point to religious Jews concerning a temple that had been true. It wasn't to an unknown God, it was to Yahweh, the God of Israel, it was to the true and living God. And yet, by the time of Christ, that temple was now obsolete, and their faith wasn't in the Lord, it was in the temple anyway, which as far back as Jeremiah 7, God was warning them, "Don't have that attitude." That's why he allowed the temple to be destroyed by the Babylonians in 586 B.C. And he says, "God doesn't dwell in temples made with hands." Verse 25, "Nor is he worshiped with men's hands, as though he needed anything, since he gives to all life and breath and all things." Now, this is the same sort of thing that God has said elsewhere. Look back with me a moment at Psalm 50. Psalm 50. And verse number seven is where we'll break in. The 50th Psalm, 50, Psalm 50, and verse 7, verse 7, he says, "Here, O my people, I will speak, O Israel, and I will testify against you. I am God, your God. I will not rebuke you for your sacrifices or your burn offerings, which are continually before me. I will not take a bull from your house, nor goats out of your folds; for every beast of the forest is mine, and the cattle on a thousand hills." He goes on to say, "That I know all, the birds of the mountains and the wild beasts of the field are mine. If I were hungry, I would not tell you, for the world is mine and all its fullness." That reminds us of Psalm 24:1, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof," or we'd say, "The earth is the Lord's and everything in it." "Will I eat the flesh of bulls, or drink the blood of goats? Offer to God thanksgiving, and pay your vows to the Most High," and so, so forth. So God's making the point, "Look, I don't need your sacrifices, as the chorus says, 'He owns the cattle on a thousand hills, the wealth in every mine.'" God doesn't need us to support him. And he's speaking anthropomorphically, he's speaking as if he were a man, and he's saying, "Look, if I needed something to eat, I wouldn't have to wait till you brought me something." Now, this is contrary to the Greek idea of the gods, and the Roman idea of the gods, because later, in the Roman work in Latin, the Aeneid, which was written by their epic poet Virgil, Virgil has this picture of the hero Aeneas offering a sacrifice... Virgil has this picture of the hero Aeneas offering a sacrifice, and the gods are actually smelling the sacrifice, and they're a bit like guys I've seen at Super Bowl parties. They're there out by the grill, drooling. "Oh, man, doesn't that meat smell good? Ooh, this is like fogo de chão," you know, like one of those churrascarias. And so, they're looking at the meat, "And the gods are flying around like flies," the Aeneid said. Now, what a base human view of God. When men make these false conceptions of God, they always bring God lower. When Psalm 50 says, "I don't need you to bring me a cow or a goat. I own the whole world, for crying out loud." And it's the same thing in Christendom today. When people come to our meetings and they say, "Where's the offering? I wanna give to God," and they don't know God. And they think by giving God some money, "Oh, look, I've bought off God, God's on my side now." Ridiculous! He owns everything. You know, the thought that you can come in and put $5 in the plate, or even if you could give $5 billion, it wouldn't compare to the wealth that God has, even in strictly material terms. So, this idea that God lives in the temple, that he's restricted to the house, and that he's worshipped with men's hands, and that he needs what we bring to him, does not correspond to the truth, because "he gives to all life and breath and all things." Rather than take from man, God is a giver. We already saw that in Acts 14. By his providence, he provides the things we need for life. Now, Acts 26, he goes on to amplify this creation. Verse 26. "He has made from one blood every nation of men to dwell on the face of the earth, and has determined their preappointed times and the boundaries of their dwellings." Now, look at that. That verse alone ought to put the concept of racism to death. Because God points out, "I made of one blood all the nations of the earth." If you go back far enough, we all go back to Noah, right? We're either from Shem Ham or Japheth, and they all were sons of Noah. So, we all go back to Noah, and even before that, we all go back to Adam. So, this idea that we look at people based on the color of their skin, based on what they look like, based on what part of the world they come from or where they were born, and we judge them is unbiblical. I'm not saying "we," as in Christians. Christians ought not to do this, although unfortunately, like every other sin, it's not unknown to Christians. So, we must guard our hearts. But in the world, you know, they're so worried about racism, and yet racism is all over the world, in every country. And it's not black on white, or Latino on black, or white on Asian, or whatever. It's every kind of tribe, every kind of distinction of man is fighting each other around the world. You know, go to Burundi and look at the Hutus and the Tutsis, you know? And go to other countries, go to the Slavic countries, and look at what they did in the 90s, as the Bosnian Serbs and the Croats were fighting against one another. And there was a religious component, yes, but there was also an ethnic component to that struggle. And so, these are problems that are the world over. But he's saying, "No, God made everybody from one blood. We all came from Adam." And look at this, he's determined their preappointed times and the boundaries of their dwellings. Now, the world, of course, gets very upset today with Israel. And they say, "Now, look at you, Israel. You didn't live in that country, you know, for all this time, and you come in and you kick out the Palestinians and you take their land." Now, let me just say, first and foremost, the modern state of Israel is not a believing nation, okay? And if you look at the statistics, some of the surveys say up to 90% of the people living in Israel, in the Jewish community at least, would say they're agnostic. So, these are not Jews that are doing what they do because they say, you know, "God gave us this land." Although you can find religious Jews in Israel that say that, but they're a minority. Israel has committed atrocities against other people. Just the way we could talk about the United States in its history has committed atrocities against people. So, has England. Just ask the Irish. But so have the Irish. And you can go back and forth. And if you name me a people group, I can probably go back in history with enough time and research, and I can find things they've done wrong. Why? Because we've all sinned and fall short of the glory of God. Now, I'm not excusing that sin. But we know, in the Bible at least, when God promised that land to Israel and said, "I'm gonna take you in, and you're gonna destroy the seven Canaanite nations that were there before you," this was multiple things going on. Number one, God only did that after giving the Amorites more than 400 years to repent. He said to Abraham in Genesis 15, "The cup of the Amorites is not yet full." So, God doesn't judge quickly. God is long-suffering, not willing that any should perish. And he gives time to repent. And you think of the light of Abraham, the pilgrim. You think of Isaac and Jacob. You think of Melchizedek. People like that, that served the living and true God and were a light to the nations. And God gave them more than four centuries to repent. And then, by what God did to Egypt, he gave warning to the nations of the conquest, didn't he? Because when they came to Jericho and the spies talked to Rahab, the prostitute, she says, "We heard about what this god did to Egypt. We don't want that to happen to us." You know, centuries later, in 1 Samuel 4, the Philistines are still talking about it, saying, "These are the gods that destroyed Egypt." I mean, they've got it wrong. It's God, not gods. But they remember what God did to the superpower that day. So, by showing that judgment, he's giving time for people to repent. And what does Rahab do? They show up, she says, "I don't wanna be destroyed. I wanna flee the wrath to come. I want my household and me to serve the Lord. I wanna follow the Lord. How can I be saved, basically?" And they receive her into the people of God. They don't say, "Well, sorry, God wants to destroy the Canaanites. I guess you're out of luck, Rahab." No. They say, "Yes. If you hang this red cord in the window, when we come here, we won't destroy you. Anyone who pertains to you, bring them in this house, and then we'll bring you out." And that's what the Bible says they did. And Rahab was received into the community of the people of God. How received? Well, she becomes the ancestress of King David. And we open our New Testament, and the genealogy in Matthew tells us, "She becomes the ancestress, therefore, of Messiah, the Lord Jesus Christ." Oh, the grace of God. The Gibeonites come to Joshua, and they pretend to be somebody else. They put on an Academy Award-winning performance. "No, we're not from around here, from Canaan. We come from a far country. Do you see these worn-out clothes? I've got my polyester leisure suit on from the 70s, and you can see it's very frayed with the wide collars and whatnot, and the gold chain that I got from John Travolta. And yeah, we're from far away, and we've been traveling for ages. Look at our pita bread is moldy, and now our hummus has gone rancid, and we came on a long journey. And all of it was a pack of rubbish. They were from right down the road." But they said, "Please make us a treaty. Don't destroy us. Enslave us, you know? Make us your servants." And they don't consult with God, and they make the treaty. And then, they find out, "Hey, those guys are local. They were under the ban, they should have been destroyed." And what does God say? "You honor the treaty. Make them cutters of wood and make them carriers of water." Now, what does Israel publicly need wood and water for, anyway? Well, one of the things they did a lot of, as we heard the other day, was ceremonial washings that needed water. And they needed wood for sacrifice. And so, the Gibeonites become the people that in some small way are indirectly facilitating the worship of the Lord. Do we know of any other people in the Bible that should have been destroyed, but they've been brought in, even though they didn't have promises? Even though they didn't have a right to a covenant? And they've been brought in, and they've been made part of a temple, a habitation of God and the Spirit? Well, that's just how Ephesians 2 describes us, brethren. So, every time, even in the conquest, every time that somebody cried out to God for salvation, God responded in mercy, saved them. "Whosoever calls on the name of the Lord," we've already read in Acts, "shall be saved." God doesn't want to damn people. God isn't up there saying, "Sorry, I really, really wanna send you to hell, and so you won't be." No. "For God so loved the world," it says. And he's telling them here, he's determined the preappointed boundaries of the nations. He put the nations where they are. And when you read Deuteronomy 2, you find out it's not just that God gave Israel a land. Deuteronomy 2, there were peoples like the Imims and the Zemzimims, who lived in the land, and they're pushed out by the Moabites, and by the Edomites, and by other nations. So, God raises up kingdoms, and God puts down kingdoms. That's what the book of Daniel tells us as well, right? And God lets these nations have their times, and even lets these nations have their places. Why? Verse 27. "So that they should seek the Lord, in the hope that they might grope for him and find him, though he is not far from each one of us; for in him we live and move and have our being." And so, he goes on to quote one of their prophets. "We are also his offspring." Isn't that amazing? You say, "What is going on in the world? Why do nations rise the way they do and fall the way they do?" Look at the Soviet Union. I grew up in the, what turned out to be the waning days of the Cold War. But don't make any mistake about it, I was a Cold War baby, you know? I mean, I hated the Russians. Every time the Olympics came around, I didn't care if they went out on the ice and fell on their face, you know? I'm rooting against the Russians, because I'm an American. And this is communism. This is this evil, godless system. They are the enemy. And I'm like, you know, I don't like that country. This is what I'm being taught in elementary school as a little kid. And getting older, you know, you're thinking about the threat of Russia, and we have NATO, and we're putting, you know, missiles in Turkey, and different army units in Germany and other places of the world, in case they attack. And then, suddenly, as I'm finishing up high school, the Berlin Wall comes down. Glasnost and Perestroika in Russia. Russia opens up. And you say, "Wow, I never saw that coming." I mean, it looked like Russia was gonna last and last and last. And hardly anybody of the foreign policy pundits really saw this coming, at least coming then. And what happened? Well, when Russia opened up, and when the eastern countries opened up with them, Romania and Hungary and Czech, what's now Czech Republic, and Slovakia and Slovenia and so forth, believers went in in a big way. And I knew a brother who had been serving in one of the Scandinavian countries, and in this country, he was seeing very, very little response to the gospel. He had been there for a couple decades, only saw a handful of people come to Christ. He said he went into Russia in those early days, and he said in 10 minutes, they could give out 7,000 pieces of literature. And he said they'd go back later, and they wouldn't find any on the ground. They wouldn't find any in the trash cans. People were hungry for anything about God. They had been deprived. They had been forbidden to read the Bible or have a Bible. And they went with bibles and New Testaments and booklets about the gospel, and David Gooding and John Lennox went in with a lot of their material, and others went in as well. And there was this great, massive response, that suddenly, the people had access to this. And Russian people are very intellectual. They're readers. They like philosophy. If you don't believe it, read some of their classics, like Dostoevsky, and like Tolstoy, and Pushkin, and others. And they like to take on the big issues of life. And so, that's a great opportunity to share the gospel. And back in those days, there was such an incredible hunger. Now, things have closed up a little more. There's still gospel work being done in Russia. We have personal friends that are serving the Lord there. But in any case, it's amazing how God opens up countries, and makes empires fall even, to open up places to the gospel. And he says, "That's why God appoints the boundaries, so that people should seek for God and look for Him." And he's not far from every one of us, because we're also His offspring. In other words, we're creatures of God. So, if we're the offspring of God, if God made us, this personal God, we ought not to think, he says, "That the divine nature is like gold or silver or stone, something shaped by art and man's devising." In other words, if complex beings like us were made by God, do we think the real gods are gods that we can fashion, that we can carve? The psalmists are ready, in Psalm 115 and also in Psalm 135, says, "That's absurd." These images that are made have ears, but they don't hear; mouths, but they don't speak; noses, but they don't smell; eyes, but they don't see; hands, they don't handle; feet, they don't walk. In other words, they don't do anything. Isaiah talks about it. He says, "A guy goes out and finds a tree that won't rot," because after all, it's a bummer when your god gets termites. And he goes out and finds a tree that won't rot, and he cuts the tree in half, and he takes it to a craftsman. The craftsman fashions it into a beautiful image, and they deck it out with gold and silver and chains, and all kinds of beautiful gems, and they fall down and worship it and say, "Ah, my God." "What happened to the other half of the tree?" "Oh," says Isaiah, "well, they split that up for firewood, and they cooked their lunch on it." "Oh, I see." Half of the tree becomes the means of cooking your lunch, the other half is your god. That makes a lot of sense, right? The absurdity of infidelity. Or as Darby called it in the title of one of his books, "The irrationalism of infidelity." It's not rational. It doesn't correspond to consistent thought. And here, he says, "How do you think these lesser material things are God? How do these scientists deify the forces of nature and say that we're here because of gravity, because of the strong and weak electromagnetic forces, because of matter, and because of chance, and all these things, and material stuff? It's rubbish. These things have no mind, they can't create anything. We see all around this design that befits a designer who's greater than his creation." He says, verse 30, "Truly, these times of ignorance God overlooked, but now commands all men everywhere to repent." He had said something similar back in chapter 14 to those at Lystra, that God didn't come down and intervene and stop you from these foolish practices of religion. Now, here, now he says, though, something's changed. "God commands all men everywhere to repent." What's different? Well, he's appointed a day on which he will judge the world in righteousness by the man whom he has ordained. A judgment day has been set, it's going to come. And who's the judge? Well, the man he's ordained. How do we know who that is? "He has given assurance of this to all in raising him from the dead." So, the resurrection speaks of the one who is the judge. The Lord said this himself in John 5. "The Father has given life to the Son to have life in himself, even as the Father has life in himself." The Lord Jesus is the life giver. And then, he goes on to say, "The Father has committed all judgment to the Son, that all may honor the Son as the Father." You see, the reason people fight against the doctrine of creation and don't wanna accept it, is they instinctively know, "If we have a creator, then we're beholden to him. If we've been made by someone, then we have to ask, why were we made?" Frankenstein, the monster, not the scientist. Frankenstein's monster in Mary Shelley's novel is basically asking that question. "Why have you made me? You know, for what cause did you make me?" And if we think about a creator, we have to ask that question. And we have to understand, "Well, if God made me, then God has a right to tell me what to do." The life giver has a right to be the law giver. The one who created is the judge. And the Lord Jesus is going to judge, so we better be ready. We've gotta repent, and we know this is true, not just because he said, "Someday, I'm gonna judge the world." I mean, people can make all kinds of claims, and they're just hot air, right? But this is backed up by his resurrection. He said he's going to die, and three days later, rise again from the dead. It happened exactly. "This is the one whom the Father has said, 'I'm raising up to be the judge of all the earth.'" And when they heard of the resurrection, verse 32 says, "Some mocked, while others said, 'We'll hear you again in this matter.'" Same thing that happens when we share the gospel, right? Some people say, "That's stupid. That's the dumbest thing I ever heard." And other people say, "Well, that's interesting. Maybe I'll think about that some other time." Unfortunately, someday never comes for a lot of people. You don't know if you'll have another day. And if you harden yourself against the truth, you could harden yourself right out of the opportunity to believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. I was listening to a debate one time, a few years back, of a Christian and a skeptic, a guy who was an agnostic scientist. In fact, he's the founder of American Skeptic Magazine, a man called Michael Shermer. And the Christian he was debating is a very brilliant man. And the Christian he was debating is a very brilliant man, he has two PhDs from Oxford University, I believe, he teaches at Oxford, and his PhDs are in microbiology and in theology. So you would think this guy is ideally placed to have a debate with, with the skeptic. Problem was, they, they didn't call it a debate, they called it a dialogue. And that's usually a red flag to me. And the Christian guy, he was being way too nice. Now, don't get me wrong, I've said this before, we want to speak the truth in love. And I've heard apologists that are so arrogant in the way they present the truth, that it's a turnoff. And one thing I like about Brother John Lennox, when he goes to these type of things and debates, you can see always his kindness toward the person he's talking with. He's a gentleman. And you can even see that he wants to win them to Christ. He always has that evangelistic instinct to want to win them to the Lord. Well, this Christian guy, when I say he was being too nice, he was giving away the store. The skeptic guy would say something, "Oh, yes, I can see that," you know, and so forth. And then he'd say, "But I think this or that." And I'm thinking, "Dude, preach the word, you're coming on way too weak." Well, finally, the skeptic guy says, "You know, really, it all comes down to the resurrection." I mean, I don't know how any thinking person could believe a story so ridiculous, that somebody would come again from the dead like that. I mean, that just doesn't happen, you have to be a complete idiot to believe in the resurrection. "It, it is the most irrational thing I've ever heard," he said. And within five minutes, he was the guy that was talking about the search for extraterrestrial life. The moderator asked him, "Oh, aren't you involved in SETI? Oh, yes, and we're listening, because you know, there, there must be intelligent life out there, and we're listening for messages from them." Okay, so the resurrection, which is historically verifiable by eyewitnesses, by written records from the time, that's irrational. But believing in aliens out there that are trying to contact us, and we just haven't heard from them yet, that's more plausible? Even though we don't have any accepted scientific evidence of that, any empirical proof? And yet, that's how the world is, right? They have no problem believing in aliens, because aliens, of course, are going to like us. Aliens are going to come and help us. Aliens are going to come and pat us on the back and say, "Well, you primitive people, but you're nice and well-meaning, and we'll give you greater technology, and then you'll be like us." But they won't ask us to repent. They won't ask us to admit we're sinners. They won't ask us to explain why we've nearly destroyed this planet, and why we'd destroy any other planet that we tried to colonize eventually, because of our sin. Aliens make no demands on us. So people are fine with aliens? "That's great," they say. But when you talk about the living God who demonstrates himself by raising his Son from the dead and making him the judge, people get uncomfortable, they say, "That's ridiculous, that's stupid, that's unscientific. How can anybody believe that?" And other people say, "Well, some other time we'll talk about this." But look at this, verse 34. "However, it says there, 'Some men joined him and believed. Among them, Dionysius the Areopagite,' so he was a member of the very court there, and he was persuaded to believe on the Lord Jesus, and a woman named Damaris, and others with them." So again, we see, when the gospel's proclaimed, there's a division. Some people believe, some people reject, that's just going to be how it's going to be. But we see here a wonderful presentation of the gospel by Paul. Now, I think we're at our question and discussion time, so if you have something you'd like to share...